New business? Council Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Campaign finance reform. If you'll indulge me with the preamble here. City halls have a basic important duty to run a city and to run it well. But we also have the responsibility to look ahead, to think smart, to adapt, to be creative, and to seize opportunities that address the larger issues that impact our communities. In the case of getting big money out of elections, this is a serious issue in our country and it has a corrosive effect on our elections and our democratic process. It's a serious enough of a foundational problem that I think it's going to take all hands on deck, and we're going to have to tackle it on all levels, from our city halls all the way up to the Supreme Court of the nation. And that's why I'm introducing this new business item today. I do want to thank -- there's been a lot of work in preparation even getting us to this point, and I want to thank my colleagues who've met with the attorneys from Free Speech for People to get an introductory briefing on the issue. I also want to thank you and remind you of your unanimous support about a year ago when we supported the move to amend resolution to oppose Citizens United. I ask for your cooperation, your patience, and your enthusiasm to have an important and robust conversation about this proposal as it winds forward. I see a lot of people here wearing red shirts who want to speak tonight, and I thank you in advance for being here to show your support. So I move that we refer this item to a scheduled committee of the whole. At that point, we'll certainly delve into the details. We'll have the opportunity to hear a presentation and to have discussion with our legal team. In addition to hearing from the voices of the people, we're also going to be able to hear some of the best legal specialists in the country who are experts on this subject to help add to the discussion. So I think we're going to thoroughly and appropriately at that point address many of the questions I know my colleagues have. I don't expect this to be easy, but I do expect it to be fair and to be a thorough discussion. Interestingly, I'll just add that some of the attorneys that we'd like to invite in the future as we have this discussion, in addition to our two people here who will speak in a minute, will be Professor Lawrence Tribe, an expert in constitutional law at Harvard Law School. We also have a local expert, Professor Siala Torres-Baliski, who's an expert in election law and constitutional law at Stetson University College of Law, and she's a fellow at the Brennan Col-- excuse me, the Brennan Center for Justice at New York University Law School. There's a number of other attorneys involved, including notably a couple of professors from both sides of the aisle. Professor Richard Painter, who was a former chief ethics counsel to President George W. Bush, as well as retired Ambassador Norman Eisen, former chief ethics counsel to President Obama.
Second.
So, thank you. That did conclude my remarks.
Can we have cards on this item first? Please, Madam Clark.
We have 14 speakers. I'll call to names Ray Claire Johnson and Karen Lieberman.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I was here back in August of 2014 as part of a move to amend request to pass the resolution. We're here tonight as part of American Promise, which is a group -- our whole group moved over to them because their movement is much more broad-based, and we thought that that was important to move this forward. And what we discovered over the last two years, or what we've come to believe, is that if we wait for the amendment to get passed, the damage to our nation is going to be so great that we don't believe that it can be reversed. It's very, very threatening. I can't overstate how important this is. And this is another alternative that will help solve the problem, or a great deal of the problem, very, very quickly. And so, when we were here before, Councilwoman Nurse had said that he thought the republic was in danger, and that certainly is true, and it gets more so every day. Representative Cornell or Councilwoman Cornell happened to say, "I want to tell people what I believe in. I don't want some billionaire doing that." And we believe we have to act now to keep the billionaires out of St. Petersburg and the other deep-pocketed money, so that the citizens' vote matters and that it does not become an issue of who has the most money. And that's the only way to protect our communities. So I'd like very much to encourage you to support this. I think you can hear that we've put -- we have a stellar team behind this, and I'd like to also thank the people who turned out tonight because they are exercising their civil civic responsibility. And you all know that sometimes that can be very difficult. And I think the other important thing to share is that 80 percent of Americans, regardless of their political persuasion, believe that we need to do something about Citizens United. St. Petersburg has already taken the lead once with the resolution in our county, and I would encourage you to take this next step, which is far more important to the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, councilpeople. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and special thanks to Councilwoman Rice for presenting the ordinance to protect St. Petersburg elections from foreign-influenced corporations and super PAC spending. I'm Karen Lieberman from the Riviera Bay neighborhood. I'm active in several local organizations, and today I'm speaking on behalf of the Pinellas County Chapter of American Promise. Two years ago, in August 2014, this council voted unanimously to pass an ordinance that stated, "Money is not speech; corporations are not people." Today, we are here to ask you to go one important step further. Today, we have the opportunity to take a real bite out of Citizens United decision, which has been the bane of the election process since 2010. You, members of this council, have the opportunity to put our country back on track toward a fair election process. The ordinance that will be put before you today will ban foreign-influenced corporations and super PACs from poisoning our city elections. Let me offer an example. Earlier this week, the op-ed in the Tampa Bay Times, co-written by Councilwoman Rice, discussed the Saudi government's interference with local politics in Austin, Texas through the Uber corporation. The op-ed did not mention, however, that Uber, which is now more than 5 percent owned by the Saudi government, also spent $600,000 on voter referendums in Seattle, $700,000 in California, $300,000 in Washington, D.C., $200,000 in Maryland, and $70,000 in Oregon. It also now has engaged a fleet of lobbyists, 250 by one count, in 45 of the nation's 50 state houses. Uber has already been discussed at St. Pete City Council meetings. There is nothing that could convince me that we wouldn't also be subjected to a deluge of their glossy flyers and mailers detailing whatever they want our electorate to believe, whether it is about background checks or information about a particular candidate. This ordinance will help ensure that these threats never permeate St. Pete elections because it requires corporations, those which spend money to influence St. Petersburg elections, to certify that they are not foreign-influenced. Therefore, for these reasons, the examples I have described above would not be legal. Without this ordinance, what Uber has done in cities around the U.S. could become reality in St. Petersburg. This ordinance also sets a limit on the amount of money a wealthy funder, such as an individual such as one of the Koch brothers, or an organization such as the National Rifle Association, could contribute to an outside spending group, a super PAC, which spends money to influence St. Petersburg elections. Because of this limit, wealthy spenders would be blocked from dumping unlimited amounts of money into our elections.
Thank you.
Please consider this. Wouldn't it be an improvement if our legislative leaders, you and others--
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lynda Johnston and John Bonifaz. Lucinda?
I actually brought written remarks this time because this is very important to me. On December 12, 2012, less than two weeks before Christmas, a mentally ill young man slaughtered 20 first graders with high-powered rifles. These babies were so badly mangled by gunshots that experienced medical examiners had to take frequent breaks to clear their eyewear because they were stained with tears. We wanted common sense gun control that banned the sale of high-powered military rifles, but we were powerless. On June 12, as we were processing the murder of a popular musician by a mentally ill man with a gun, a man who was on our terrorist watch list used a legally purchased high-powered assault rifle to slaughter 49 of our gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender brothers and sisters as they danced in a nightclub. This time, all we wanted was further investigation of persons on a terrorist watch list before they could purchase a gun, but we were powerless. A little over a week ago, right here in St. Petersburg, a man with a history of mental illness killed my friend Sandra Sanchez, and then himself with a legally purchased handgun. I watched her friends and her partner grieve and wondered how someone with severe mental disabilities was able to purchase a handgun, and I felt powerless. Why does it seem that we are so powerless when so many of the answers seem so simple? In the case of guns, the answer is clear. The vast majorities of Americans want a ban on assault rifles and other common sense gun laws. But the National Rifle Association uses their vast fortune to assure that their money drowns us out and that their simple agenda to pump up the sales of guns in our country is heard loud and clear by the people who were elected to office. The NRA is so powerful that they were able to buy a law that even prohibits my friend Lisa Wheeler Bowman, who lost her child to gun violence, from so much as asking for a proclamation supporting reasonable gun control. And it isn't just about guns. We can't get reasonable food labeling, access to clean water, solar power, reasonable insurance rate, lower drug costs, or even a ban on drilling and fracking in a state that's made up of fragile limestone because their money shouts louder than our voices. I'm 63 years old, and I'm tired. I'd like to leave the world where my grandchildren can go to school and not worry about being shot, where the only river of grass on the entire planet can flow freely and clean our waters so it doesn't foul our beaches. But mostly, I'd like to live in a country where ordinary citizens have the same political power as corporations and billionaires. This is a very good start. I support it completely, and I urge you to vote on it when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Bonifaz. I'm the co-founder and president of Free Speech for People. We're a national nonprofit, nonpartisan organization focused on challenging big money in politics and unchecked corporate power. We engage in legal advocacy and public education all across the country to do that. I live in Amherst, Massachusetts, but I'm proud to say that my father-in-law, who's here tonight, Dick Pierce, and my mother-in-law Sandra Pierce, live here in St. Petersburg at Westminster Palms. And I also really want to thank Councilmember Darden Rice for advancing this new business item and for all of you considering this question. We have crafted, with Councilmember Rice's work, the proposed ordinance that is part of this new business item in a way that is designed to be completely consistent with current Supreme Court jurisprudence. And our counsel, Scott Greatack, will talk more directly to that. I really just want to say that I've been able to be here since the start of this hearing and had the pleasure to listen to many of the subjects that this city council is dealing with, all of which are crucially important, obviously, to this community. From the question of gun control to education to homelessness to public parks to how we protect and strengthen our own neighborhoods and our own communities. And so much of these questions go directly to the question of the state of our democracy and whose voices get heard and whether or not voices are being drowned out. And the real challenge, I think, we face today with our democracy is that big-money interests are drowning out the voices of ordinary citizens. The threats of super PAC spending and of foreign corporate money are at the doorstep of St. Petersburg, and St. Petersburg has the opportunity to protect and defend its democracy here with this proposed ordinance and to set an example for the nation of what we can do to reclaim our democracy for a country. Thank you.
Scott Greatack and David McHalep.
Thank you for having me today. My name's Scott Greatack. I'm counsel for Free Speech for People, based in Washington, DC. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you all for welcoming me into your city. It's a pleasure for me to be able to contribute to this important conversation we're having about campaign finance reform and about the integrity of our elections. I'm from Ohio. I got into this work, and I care about this work because I used to be a public defender. And as a public defender, judges are elected in Ohio. And when judges are elected, it means the judges have to campaign. And when they campaign, it means money. And I saw the clients that I had, the folks that I was representing, who by definition were not able to have their representation and their voice heard equally because of the system that was established in Ohio disenfranchised through the ballot box. I do not want to see the problems that have spread in judicial elections where super PACs and the influence of corporations come to poison local democracies, work that I've been following for years now, come to a city like St. Petersburg. We can name examples all across this state where super PACs have come in from national funders or from local support networks that have plugged their influence into otherwise local government work. In Alachua County, in Gainesville, super PACs spend huge amounts of money to get around the contribution limits that were even recently passed by their commission to try and keep big money out of their elections. Down south in Miami-Dade County, two judicial elections, county court judges drew in over $300,000 in super PAC spending in something the Miami Herald called "the new front for spending in Florida," defined by the emergence of political committees supporting judicial candidates. We know in Cocoa Beach and in Melbourne, there has been significant spending by super PACs who were able to circumvent contribution limits as well. This ordinance takes a step in the other direction. It attempts to turn the tide. A super PAC is basically an organization that allows any funder in the country to give as much money as he or she wants, and then that organization can spend as much money as it wants on an election. It's an undemocratic process. We know that the outcomes of these super PACs are not equal for our constituents in our communities. We know that black folks don't spend as much money on super PACs as white folks do. We know that the policy preferences behind the very rich who support these organizations skew in the favor of the wealthy, and they skew in the favor of folks who look like me, who are older and not communities of color and not women. While super PACs are spending huge amounts of money on our elections and are coming to the doorstep of St. Petersburg, this ordinance is a way of protecting the integrity of local elections here. As John was saying, it protects the integrity of these elections by putting up walls around how much money an organization that seeks to spend in a St. Petersburg election can accept. It limits it to $5,000 from any contributor. At the same time, it meets head-on the influence of foreign corporations or foreign-influenced corporations who hope to spend in St. Petersburg elections as well by asking--
Thank you. Thank you.
David McHalep in St. Petersburg. I ask you to vote no on this. I hope when you have your committee meetings that you'll ask people from the other side of the issue to come who are just as qualified to make sure you do that. If corporations are not people and should not spend money on campaigns, then should they stop paying taxes? Should you stop regulating them? Because I'd like you to stop regulating my business, my corporation, if that's the case. This is a big boogeyman. It's just a cause celebre among liberal groups. It's a way to score cheap political points by members of this city council so they can go campaign on the issue and get people in red shirts to walk to or to the door for them when they run for office again. And you know, you're about to violate your oath you took to support the Constitution of the United States of America, which says you will uphold the Constitution. And this law, Citizens United, is constitutional because this law is an exercise of our natural rights to free speech. So you're about to violate your oath, and I think there are serious legal ramifications to that. You say you want to stop wealthy funders. How wealthy? People who make more than $10,000? What's wealthy? You say you want to stop foreign influence. You know very well that's already illegal and already regulated at the state and national level. You want to violate state law that trumps anything that the city does on campaign finance reform. Most importantly, you want to endanger our republic, sincerely endanger it by violating free speech. What this is is an incumbent protection act. You want to stop anyone else from raising money so you can protect your little seats there that you earned. And how did you earn it? With a lot of money. And I'll get into that in a minute. Who brought all those red shirts folks in this audience are wearing? Why, it was "Move to amend." And who has helped fund "Move to amend"? Why, it was "Occupy Wall Street." And who helped fund them? George Soros. So you might want to look in the mirror about this issue. Now, let's talk about the hypocrisy of candidate or not candidate, now Councilwoman Darden Rice, who is leading this effort. Let's talk about the hypocrisy of Greenlight Pinellas and all the money they spent from foreign multinational corporations on Greenlight Pinellas and how you celebrated with them when they did so. Let's look at all the PAC money that Darden Rice has received in her record $118,000 fundraising effort to secure her seat in the first place. Let's look at how some people like Ron Gofrank and Progressive Equity gave her money, and they did so from a wrong address. It appears it was funneled through other addresses here so extra money could be double-donated. Now, let's start looking at the pattern of deception and the lack of transparency there. Let's look at SEIU, $500. UA Plumbers, Pathfinders, No Rights Locals, all $500 PAC contributions. All these PACs get unlimited contributions, and you haven't checked that the foreign give the money back. I could keep going on with the 35 PAC contributions you received, and yet you hypocritically propose to stop us, the citizens, from spending our money to earn office? Shame on you, Darden Rice.
So I'm just going to remind the audience, I know you're passionate about this issue, but we have legal limitations of three minutes per speaker. We have been sued for allowing people to go on in uneven amounts, so I'm going to ask you to please recognize when I say thank you, your three minutes are up. And we also do not allow comments from the gallery, including clapping or booing and hissing. So I know that you're passionate. We share your passion, but I'm going to ask that we remain in civil discourse while we're in this chamber. Next two speakers, please.
Jake McCullough and Richard Pierce.
I'm Jack McCullough, a member of the League of Women Voters. Our president, Julie Kessel, is unable to attend this afternoon, so she asked me to present these comments on behalf of the League. The League is a nonpartisan political organization whose mission is to build citizen participation in the democratic process. We educate, but we also take positions after a study and then advocate on those positions when appropriate, such as now. Our organization at every level, national, state, and local, has taken a position on the issue of campaign finances. We believe candidates should be able to compete with financial equity. We also believe that citizens should be the one to elect their officials and that those officials should vote in alignment with the will of their constituents. We do not believe that corporations are people, and we oppose unchecked corporate influence through the power of money. We agree with the Supreme Court that foreign investors should not be able to contribute to American political candidate campaigns. In addition, corporations owned by foreign investors should not be able to contribute to those campaigns either. We support this ordinance because big-money super PACs and foreign investment in our campaigns introduce undue influence and corruption, undermining the fundamental tenets of a fair and participatory democracy. Make no mistake, St. Petersburg is threatened. These big-money influences have impacted our state and national elections in significant ways, and they are coming to our town. A prior speaker talked about Uber. We do not want to be added to the list of Austin, Seattle, and Washington, D.C. Failure to enact this ordinance will have serious consequences. Decisions of thoughtful leaders will be vulnerable to being overturned. Principal community members who are not wealthy will be unable to successfully run for public office or win re-elections. Publicly elected offices will be opened up to the highest bidder, and the will of the people will not be heard. You have the opportunity here to protect our community from these corrupting influences. We ask that you move the ordinance forward to the committee of the whole and pass it, and we appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good afternoon and evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Dick Pierce. I'm a resident of St. Petersburg on Beach Drive. I live in Westminster Retirement Community, which is in Steve Cornell's district. I hope you tell them I was here. I'd like to request that you accept, pass, and implement the proposed ordinance for the good of St. Petersburg, for other cities that will follow suit, and for our nation as a whole. I believe strongly, if I remember my high school history, that corporations were set up in Old England to limit the liability of stockholders so that corporations were given limited liability, and in that country, they're still called limited in their name as a company so that shareholders would invest and not have to be given unlimited liability. They got limited liability. So they were set up separate from citizens to have limited liability, and they were separate from individuals. It's inconceivable to me that they now can cherry pick and add back what things of citizens they would care to have, like free speech, and the ability not to disclose their campaign contributions. I like and love corporations. I owe my retirement living and my career to a very large computer corporation. I live with a group of rather conservative, rather conscious folks or graduates of corporations. I do not, however, like the big influence in businesses and government and in politics, and I wish to limit the spread of that. I do not like what I see. I don't like and I abhor recent developments that increase corporations' ability to donate large sums of money to campaigns without disclosure or limit. Much of this increase, in my opinion, can be laid to the Citizens United decision, and I'm very, very much in favor of any efforts to overturn or reduce the influence of that decision. So I ask that you please accept this resolution, vote it, implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two speakers, please.
Reverend Jake Donovan and Lynda La Pointe.
Good to be with you this evening. My name is Jack Donovan. I'm a former city commissioner from Gainesville, where similar legislation is now being considered. In Gainesville, I was both a Unitarian Universalist pastor and a Presbyterian pastor, and now the pastor of the Unitarian Universalist Church of St. Pete on Mirror Lake and a member of the interfaith community of St. Pete with a traditional concern for justice, for humankind, and care for creation. I'm very glad that an earlier speaker expressed his anger at what he claims is fraud by big money. That's really what we're here about. In every home and neighborhood, the transcending questions have always been, will the means to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness be secured for all? More precisely, for St. Pete today, elements of those great prophetic questions include, will basic human rights be secured for African-Americans? Will fair and good opportunity be secured for children born poor? Will the land and water and air be protected for our posterity? I would guess we all sense dully or sharply that the moral ideals and functioning of the American democratic system are being severely eroded by the power of extreme wealth and immature selfishness, that the responses to the prophetic questions are being controlled by the few and the wrong. Today, the city council will begin considering an ordinance to protect the popular elections from being, by which the people govern themselves, from being bought by huge investments of money by the super PACs of the very wealthy and dangerously powerful. All our other popular hopes depend on the success of ordinances like this across the country. We can do something special here for ourselves locally and for our country as a whole. In the end, I think it is a moral question of devotion. Who do I love enough to make a difference? Myself, my children, my grandchildren, my country, my species, my planet? Or corporations that do not breathe, do not care, do not vote-- that do not breathe, do not care, do not vote, and by every meaningful standard are not people. They are not born from people or from God. They are creations of state governments. I hope you will choose your children and mine, our country, and our planet, and enact this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda LaPointe. I am a longtime resident in St. Petersburg, and I also teach on the Gibbs campus of St. Petersburg College. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak about the danger that I believe our democratic system is in, the danger that it could be replaced by an oligarchy, where the wealthy, the connected, maintain the power and use the power to their gain. I'm nervous, but I'm speaking as an educator, and I believe it's important that the impact of these wealthy corporations and individuals have already begun in our higher education To change what is right in education by means of a larger donation or a larger contribution is wrong. We understand that the Koch Brothers, notorious for spending unlimited sums to bankroll politicians, have already in our state turned their attention to higher education. At Florida State University, they donated millions of dollars to the university on one condition, the condition being that they would have final approval for hiring people. This violates the principles of academic integrity, academic freedom, and for me, objectivity. FSU agreed to this proposal, and the only reason it was stopped is the uproar became public. Additionally, BBNT Bank promised FSU millions of dollars, as long as they could control the curriculum. They suggested final choice on readings to place in composition and literature courses. These are just a few examples from the field of education. The much bigger problem pervades our entire society. The axioms that remain in front of us are, one, money is speech; two, corporations are people. The ordinance you have in front of you can affect the pernicious results of Citizens United. Fortunately, St. Petersburg has not yet faced attempts to buy our political leaders. Let's keep it that way. Prevent laundering of funds through the super PACs or foreign share ownership of domestic businesses. I urge you to pass this ordinance, please. Thank you.
Linda Stroller and Edward Quinones.
My name is Linda Stoller, and I'm a resident here in St. Petersburg. I'm just here to let you know that I do support this ordinance. This is very important to me. The future of St. Petersburg and St. Petersburg elections are very important to me, and as a resident, I encourage you and urge you to vote for this ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Quinones has indicated he's for. Bruce Nissen and Kale Hammond. Kalen Hammond.
Bruce Nissen, I live in St. Petersburg. I'm not going to, I'm just going to wave back to you all of my time. I just wanted to say I'm speaking for the Awake Pinellas Chapter, which is absolutely in favor of this, and they urge you to move this forward and support this ordinance.
I very much appreciate your taking the time, from the specific, very important affairs that you have to deal with as a city council, to talk about something as broadly, generally important as this. I went to Washington, DC a few weeks ago for a combined action of over 200 organizations called Democracy Awakening. And I heard a speech given by the executive secretary of Greenpeace, at which she said that the reason that this had happened was because all of these social justice, environmental justice, and so forth organizations realized that the largest single obstacle to every single one of our agendas moving forward was the same. It was that our democracy is broken. It's very clear, if you look at all the polls that are ever taken in this country, that a vast majority of Americans are in favor of social and environmental equity and justice. And yet, our government does not support these policies. There's only one conclusion you can draw: democracy is broken. Our democracy is not reflecting the will of our people. And what that means is that when we fix this, to the degree that we fix this, all of the things that all of us want become much more possible, where our likely to move forward much more quickly. We hold this truth to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. When those words were written, men meant male human beings who were not slaves. It's been extended considerably now to include people of both genders and people who were formerly slaves. But I was astonished years ago to hear that it had been extended to include corporations, that have no conscience, that live forever, and so forth. And I looked into it, and I was not surprised to learn that, actually, I was surprised to learn that there's never been a court that said that corporations were people. There was a decision which was misrecorded by the clerk of a court, of a verdict that pointed in that direction, and everything has gone back to that. It wasn't fixed because it was convenient, but until now. And it turns out that it's far more than inconvenient now. It's the basis of how our democracy is broken. Thank you for taking the time to consider, and please vote in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you. For its effects on St. Pete and our national policy. Thank you.
James Sneed and Connor Harris.
Good evening.
Thank you for considering this ordinance. I don't really have a lot to say. I didn't know I was going to be here until like a couple hours ago, so. But, I mean, I'm young, I'm 21. A lot of my friends express apathy towards local and state and national government at best, and at worst disenfranchisement and feelings of powerlessness and impotency. And by and large, they attribute those feelings to feeling like what they have to say falls on deaf ears or doesn't mean anything to anyone. So, and they attribute that to Citizens United, so I'm just here to say that I stand in favor of this bill, and I want my friends to be as inspired to be active as I am, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Connor Harris.
Thank you.
I am James, and I'd just like to waive my speaking time in support of the ordinance, and thank you for taking the time to put it in action.
Thank you. Next two speakers, please.
Brian Remmler, and I have a card from Megan. Can't make out the last name.
Hi, my name is Brian Remmler. I want to express a lot of gratitude to the council for taking time to hear this and for Councilwoman Rice for introducing this ordinance. I'd like to take my time to reference some remarks that were made by a speaker earlier and just break them down piece by piece to give my personal perspective on it. I believe I heard Citizens United and also this ordinance referred to as a cause célèbre, which I believe, well, I would say I sincerely hope that the council does not view it in these trivial terms, because this is a very important issue that has serious ramifications on our local municipality and our country. Eighty percent of Americans, as the speaker mentioned before, regardless of political affiliation, think there is too much money in politics. And the consistent low voter turnout that we see year after year, I think, is reflective and confirms that idea. All we have to do is look at this election cycle and see a lot of candidates, again, on both sides of the aisle and the amount of support that they have garnered, to see that people are fed up with the political system, and they don't think that democracy is working for them. As far as the idea of this ordinance violating the Constitution, the Constitution is a living, breathing document that has been changed many times throughout our nation's history. Just as Colin Hammond referenced earlier, from expanding the idea of all men are created equal, I think it's important that we look at the fact that technology has grown exponentially. And with that growth of technology, it's also, wealth and power has been concentrated and is more concentrated in our country now than, I think, at any point in our nation's history. And so, we need to take safeguards to ensure that people are actively participating in their democracy. That's what our republic was founded on. As far as the concern of how do you define wealthy funders, and is it 10,000, is it 50,000? I think the good news is there are already limits on political spending to political action committees that individuals can contribute. And all passing this ordinance would do would be to close a loophole that was very intentionally created to erode the pillars of our democracy. As far as endangering the republic by enacting free speech, our republic was founded on the ideas of people going and meeting up and having conversations and standing up and fighting against power and speaking truth to power, if you will. And it's very important that we keep people engaged in this process, just as Connor mentioned earlier. We need the youth involved, we need people involved, and right now, many people feel marginalized. I firmly believe that passing this ordinance is a really great first step for the city of St. Petersburg. It's going to show leadership throughout the state, and will hopefully safeguard against foreign intrusion and spending by corporations. The last thing I'll mention is that regardless of groups that have pushed for this, the beautiful thing about this ordinance is that it would apply to all groups equally. And regardless of left-leaning, right-leaning political affiliation, all this does is make politics work for people again.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Megan Weeks. I'm a citizen of St. Pete. I just want to let you guys know that I do support this ordinance, and I hope that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two speakers, please.
The last speaker is Thomas Patrice. Looks like it.
Patrick.
Looks like P-A-T-E-R-C-A.
Thomas Patrick. It was close, it was pretty good. I'm just here to show my support for this, for what Darden Rice has brought to the table. I'm a resident of St. Petersburg, and I have been for two years, and I think it's a very important issue to spark a conversation and decide as a community.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one final card from Jennifer Rubellio. She did not wish to speak, but she is in support.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for everyone who came to speak tonight. This has been some of the most poignant and articulate testimony, really, to a person that we've heard here in quite a while, including the rather sizzling testimony of my always dependable foe and opponent, Dr. McHalep. I did just want to address a couple of things in good spirit. There is a difference between a super PAC and a PAC. A super PAC is unlimited spending for independent expenditures. My proposal does not address PACs, which, yes, I did receive PAC money. I'm proud of the support that I received from the unions that represent our working families. I received PAC money from environmental groups and from civil rights groups, and I'm proud of that support. The fact that I did set a record a couple years ago, raising $118,000 for a city council race, that I raised that amount with $500 limits, and it goes to show that limiting super PAC money in no way, shape, or form limits a candidate who's organized with strong support throughout the community from raising plenty of money to do what it takes to run a race. And in fact, the $500 limit now is almost quaint, because the state has since raised that amount to $1,000, which last year, I worked to try to lower that cap as well. So, I just wanted to put that out there in my self-defense, that, you know, when we run for office, you run by the rules that are there, and once you get elected, you work hard to change them to make them right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address the suggestion that myself or any of us would be violating the oath of office that we took by considering voting on this. I mean, first of all, everyone needs to understand, and we always appreciate it when people come out to share with us their thoughts, their opinions frequently. We hear things that cause us to consider things we hadn't considered before. It's always helpful when the public comes out on any issue. But what we're considering tonight is whether to talk about passing this ordinance. We're not passing the ordinance, we're not having a first reading on the ordinance. This whole deliberation and process we're having here is a decision about whether to spend any time on something, discussing the merits, discussing the issues, and I, you know, this is an invitation I probably shouldn't accept, but I can't help myself. So, you know, I mean, giving me legal advice is tantamount to me reading your brain CT. And both undertakings would be malpractice. So, I mean, what we're doing here is trying to decide what we're going to spend our time and energy on. Plainly, plainly, the constituents of this city are telling us they would like us to consider it, to determine whether we can do it, how we can do it. I'm sure there's going to be suggestions on both sides about can you, how do you, and all those things. And I believe that, I believe that addressing this issue specifically, specifically at the local level, is the right thing to do, because I believe this kind of action will allow more candidates, will attract more candidates. People who say to themselves, "I can't run, I'd love to, I'd like to, I think I'd be good at it, but I can't raise enough money," will be back in the game, and it'll be better for all of us, because the more people who are engaged in thinking about participating in the process, the better off we all are. That's the reason I'm positively considering this ordinance, and the reason I'm going to vote, to spend time, energy, and resources on deliberating, which is the legislative duty that we all swore to uphold, and my yes vote is upholding that.
I'm going to remind you that our rules for the chamber do not allow audience participation, unfortunately, so bear with us on that, but please refrain from any noise from the audience. Councilmember Montanari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to, first of all, state that I was not on council when the resolution was passed against the Citizens United versus the SEC case. I'm a newer member of our city council, and sometimes I wonder if I keep reading more and more case law, at some point in time, do I get credit and could I get a law degree?
You have to spend $200,000 for it.
Maybe a super PAC. Yeah, there you go. Find somebody to make some donations to me. I had some, I have some questions. I'm skeptical of this, of moving this forward, but I did want to talk to our legal team about this, and that's kind of where I'm standing on this issue, because, first of all, I want, you know, it seems to me that it's, this is clear, that this looks to me to be a test case here in St. Petersburg. Is this the law in any other municipality that you know of in the United States?
Not that I'm aware of. I will say, I will preface that with, I haven't done a full review. I know that there is no municipality in Florida with this type of ordinance, but I haven't done a review of the nation to see if anyone else has enacted anything similar. But would do that if you, as a body, decide to move that forward, and we would bring that information to you. that information to you.
I don't want to pin you down on a hypothetical, but if this law, this ordinance that was presented to us, if it passed at some point in the future, if it got adopted by our city council, could we be taken to court?
Well, first of all, I haven't seen the ordinance. It hasn't been presented to me. But if there, in any ordinance that you pass, we could be taken to court on a legal challenge. It's a matter of whether or not that challenge would be successful. And I'm not prepared to be able to give you that answer right now, but certainly, if it is referred to a Cal, we will do that analysis.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about campaign finance law here in the state of Florida?
Wow, that is a loaded question.
Let me be a little more specific. Where does most of our campaign finance, finance law originate from? It's not, it's not a local, most of it is state law, isn't it?
Most of it is in state statutes. Chapters 97 through 106 talk about election law in general. Chapter 106 is the chapter that describes campaign financing law to a great extent. As you know, as we've discussed before, chapters 97 to 105 are preempted. Chapter 106 isn't specifically preempted, and that's all information that we could discuss at a later time regarding preemption. But chapter 106, which addresses campaign financing, is not specifically preempted from local government in general. Now, there are other issues, First Amendment, free speech, constitutional law, and other things that have been discussed here today, that we would have to take a look at and give you an analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Councilmember Montanari?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll echo my colleagues' statements as to thanking the public for coming out and being involved. It's obviously not a transportation report or a budget report. Everybody is still here. But I want to stress that this vote is simply for us to move it to a committee of the whole to discuss in further detail, and not looking for an answer from legal at this point in time. But my biggest concern with this would be potentially a prevailing party attorney fee scenario, where if there was litigation that went through a variety of courts and we wound up not being a prevailing party, we have to be cautious and assess what our potential risks are from attorney fees and financially on the, on the city. So, when we do get to the committee of the whole and we discuss those issues, those are probably going to be areas where my questions are going to be, and with the groups that are leading the charge as to how we can insulate our city from those potential exposure. So that's kind of points that I'll be looking for additional information on. But thank you for coming out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Nurse.
When I was younger, I used to keep a prayer taped to my desk. And I will not, not precisely quote it, but it was the Serenity Prayer, which many of you may know. You know, "God, give me the courage to change the things that I can change, the patience to endure those that I can't, and the wisdom to know the difference." And, you know, I try to pay attention to what's going on in Washington, but try not to let myself get too crazed, because there's little I can do about that. But what we can do in our own backyard, we have, we do have the ability to change things in our own backyard. If this became a test case, I'd be honored to be, to be a party to that. I just wanted to just give a couple of illustrations of how big money is destroying our democracy. Why have we never been able to clean up the Everglades? We've never been able to clean up the Everglades because Big Sugar gives so, so much money to the legislature that it obliterates all of our environmental laws. Why do we have ridiculous utility regulations in the state? Because the utility companies give so much money to the legislature that they appoint their buddies to the, to the PSC, and they have 24 former PSC employees who, who work for the largest utility. Now, when they're done, you know, Amendment 1 is a, you know, is a perfect illustration of a super PAC, where, you know, where you have a, you have a, you have an amendment to kill, intended to kill solar power financed entirely by the utility companies, all done through super PACs with unlimited contributions. I look forward to this conversation, because there are, there are big stakes at hand here.
Seeing no further lights on this item, we had a motion in a second, correct? Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please enter your votes. Seeing that all present councilmembers have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Madam Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item G1 passes 621 with Councilmember Montanari voting no and Councilmember Cornell being absent.